The next item is approval of, or review at least, of our first interim report. And our fiscal services director, Doris Sue, will present that.
Do you want some amount? Yep. Good evening, everyone. For those of you that do not know me, my name is Doris Sue. I'm the fiscal director at Emory. And tonight, I'm here to present the first interim budget and give more details to the board so that they could adopt the right certification. So there are three classes of certification: positive, qualified, and negative. A positive certification is meaning the school district.
It's going to be easier for the folks at home to see the slideshow if it's in view mode. There we go.
But I don't have to start again.
So John just deleted everything.
Yep.
There we go.
But I still can move in here, right? Okay, all right. So let's start again. There are three classes of certification: positive, qualified, and negative. Positive is saying the district is able to meet its financial obligations for current year and two subsequent years. Qualified, the district may not be able to meet its obligations in 2014 and 15 and the two subsequent years. A negative certification is saying the district is not able to meet the obligations for the remainder of the year and also for the two subsequent years. So let's start by looking into the significant changes since the budget adoption. The first one got to be the revised LCAP template, which the State Board of Education approved at its November meeting. On this revised template, it put a stronger emphasis on the tie between the goals, services, and actions, making sure there is a higher student achievement outcomes. So another major change is the Prop 2 that passed in the November election. This would strengthen the state reserves, but at the same time, it will put a cap on the district reserves. But experts, a lot of people are saying this is not going to be effective in the near future because there are certain criteria that state need to meet before the Prop 2 is, you know, taking effect. So for those of you that are new to school budget, the budget is actually is a communication tool. It's a district plan for the school year based on the anticipated income and expenses. And then it will be modified throughout the fiscal year. As the assumptions change, so do the numbers. So before we start actually looking into the first interim, I would like to point your attention to one of the most critical factor that will affect a school district funding besides the condition of the state economy, and that is the attendance of a school district. And with the help of the IT department, I'm able to prepare the following two slides. It's showing the history of the Emory attendance record for all the way back to 05-06. It is projected that there will be about a 6% decline in enrollment for school year 14-15. And then this slide is showing the ADA. And you can see Emory is facing the same problem that a lot of other districts are facing, which is declining enrollment. Okay, now we are ready to go into the first interim budget for Emory. And basically, for a school budget, we are talking about three major elements. One is the income, two is the expenses, and three is the fund balance. Let's start looking into the income. For Emory, we do have a total income of $9.8 million. And then it consists of the LCFF, 5.7 million; the federal income, 280,000; the state income, 379,000; the local income, 2.9 million; and self-op transfer in, 492,000. And then the expenses is a total of $10.3 million. It consists of certificated salary, 4.4 million; classified salary, 1.2 million; employee benefits, 2.3 million; books and supplies, 362,000; contracts and services, 1.9 million dollars; indirect costs, $26,000. And then we have the transfer out, which is the general fund transfer out to food services program, and it's $181,000. So what you do is you use your total income minus your total expenses minus your transfer out, then what you will get is the negative $609,000 on the bottom of this slide, and this is going to be your net effect that will be affecting your fund balance. And on this next slide, that's the fund balance. And you can see the beginning balance is 3.7 million, and if you take out the 609,000, then the estimated ending balance for Emory at the end of 14-15 is going to be 3.1 million dollars. And the rest of this slide is going to show you the component of the ending balance, and one of them is going to be the 4% reserve requirement, the 419,000, so right here on this slide. So now let's go into the detail of each of the line item that we just covered. Let's start with the income again. And on this slide is showing you the budget that we adopted way back in August. And it's also showing you the revised budget at the first interim and also their differences. So LCFF is down by 16,000. Federal income is up 13,000. State income is decreased by 150,000. Local income is increased by 130,000. So you probably will be interested to know what make up those differences. So let's start with the LCFF. The state aid is reduced by 859,000. Property taxes is increased by 684,000. Transfer to charter, which we mentioned earlier, which is a $13,000 payment was made. Education protection account increase of 172,000. Special ed property tax transfer decrease of $330,000. No, decrease of $330,000. Okay, so there is a decrease of total of $16,000 for the LCFF.
And just if I can add a point of clarification to the board, I may have had this in my email to you, but these are based on corrections in large part that Doris Sue has made. Some of them were changes maybe to a funding source, but to a large majority, I think, Doris Sue, these are also changes and revisions that you made based on correcting some numbers.
These differences are basically is the budget changes since the adoption. And like the state aid, the decrease of 859,000 is actually is a correction to the adopted budget because at that time, we, there is a duplicate budget being posted during the adoption budget, which double count the EPA entitlement. So what happened during budget-
Is that our budget, you're talking about our budget, or are you talking about the state's budget?
Yes, during the adopted budget that we did way back in August. What happened is the EPA entitlement was double booked, one in the EPA program, and then it booked again on the state aid. So this is a correction to the adopted budget. So it's not saying the state is going to give us less money, it's just a correction to the adopted budget.
The, so you're saying the 172,000 was double booked?
No, actually, the 172,000 right here under the EPA is actually the increased entitlement for that program, the revised entitlement for EPA.
I guess I, maybe I'm wrong. I had assumed this page, these numbers largely changed because Emeryville residents maybe paid more in property taxes, and so we got to keep more in property taxes, but that was offset by the state saying, hey, we're going to send you less. It's offset by your increases in property tax.
Well, in this particular case, it's not quite the case because, again, the state aid is just a correction. There is no change on the LCFF funding from the state. It's just, should I say, is an error that we overbooked in the adopted budget-
Yeah.
-that I need to go in and back it out.
Yeah. But we didn't, did we overbook 859,000? We didn't overbook that much, did we?
Yes, we did.
We overbooked 800-
What happened actually, if you go back to the adopted budget, again, the EPA entitlement was double booked. It was booked under the EPA program, which is resource 1400. And then again, it was overbooked again in the state aid entitlement.
And-
So-
Yeah, so was that 172,000 that was booked in two places or some different amount?
No, at the time of the budget adoption, it is. But in this case, the additional 172,000 right here is actually the increased money that we are going to get from the state.
I see.
So item one, item one, the state aid, 859, is just a correction to the adopted budget. It's not a reduction of entitlement from the state on the LCFF.
I guess the question Doris Sue made is why was it such a large amount of a correction? What makes up that large amount? Was that because property taxes was in the wrong place, or, I mean, what, do you know offhand?
You know, John, the person left, I can't really tell why it happened. It just happened that when I do my first interim, I caught that. I'm not going to-
I was just wondering if you knew what made up the amount of money, okay.
Because the way that the CBO office and the business office work on the budget is the CBO office will give me the number on the state aid, and then I took the number from what I was told.
I see. You were given manual information.
Yes.
I'm sorry, I forgot, I forgot that, Doris Sue, I wasn't trying to-
But when I actually go into the FIGMAG, LCFF calculator, which I have to go through step by step on how to arrive to the LCFF entitlement, that's where I caught the EPA, actually, it was double booked in the adopted budget.
God, but there were multiple errors you found. I got it, I'm sorry, I forgot that you said that.
But I don't think, the person's not here, I don't think we should-
Yeah, so, well, here's a question for you. Does this affect our LCAP? I mean, at the end of the day, 16,000 is not that big a difference, but it seems that, you know, so maybe it's not. Maybe the answer is no, not significantly.
No, the answer is no.
But we, you know, we did an LCAP, we adopted an LCAP, and we dedicated certain monies for supplemental concentration, increase in improved services. Are we still able to fulfill those commitments?
So maybe worded in another way, the state, let's say the state is intending to give us $10. We, during, back in August, during budget adoption, we overbooked it and say there will be $20 coming in instead of the $10 that the state is going to pass to us. But right now, with the first interim, what I'm doing here is only correcting the $20 back to 10. So it's not going to affect the actual money that passing to Emory.
And we may have gotten a little lucky on the property taxes, if I recall.
Yes, that's right. The property taxes, actually, the ACOE, the county office-
Other things happen that it's going to even out in the end.
Luckily, this time, yes.
Yes, that's right.
And so the property taxes, that's completely new? I mean, that was unexpected bonus because-
The property taxes, the way that it work is the county office will send out tries in a year, the JH29. It will tell you exactly how you budget your property taxes. So at the time of the budget adoption, it was taken as the P2 at that time from 13-14 as the budget amount for 14-15. But right now, we got a new revised P1 from the county office. Then I go by what's on that report, the P1 on the J29. And thus, we find that out there is an increase of 684,000. And this will be the actual money that increase that will be coming into Emory. So we will get additional 684,000 from the state on the property taxes.
Yeah. Are you, I don't know how familiar with the LCAP, but if not, maybe you and the superintendent can go back and take another look at it in light of whatever these change. But in particular, we had about 220,000 in supplemental concentration funds. Do you know if that number is changed at all as a result of any of these revisions?
I need to go back to the FIGMAG calculator to see what is the supplemental and concentrated fund. I believe it's part in the state aid that include, because the way that-
Yeah, it's tied to the state aid.
It's tied with the state aid.
So-
And also on the FIGMAG calculator, it would not be breaking down into supplemental and concentrated. At the end of the worksheet, it's going to lump everything together. The way that it lump is basically they're going to consider state aid as two components, which is the LCFF, the supplemental and the concentrated, and then they have the property taxes, then they have the EPA, and that's it. But on the details of the worksheets that you can see on the workbook, they will break it down to you how much is the supplemental and how much is the concentrated.
Right. So we did a worksheet.
Yes.
I mean, we went beyond a worksheet. We used the seven-step formula from the state. It's in our LCAP, there's a formula, and it was based on LCFF state numbers. And so, yeah, so if you can go back and look and determine, did we overstate what our supplemental concentration is? Do we need to change that? Because if we've made commitments and obligations that we need to fulfill, if we've made a mistake and we overstated, then we need to tell the community that.
But again-
Or if we're able to just continue to live up to our obligations because we got lucky with property taxes, great. But we need to figure that out to see if we need to have another public hearing and revise our LCAP for this current year.
Okay, I will go back and look at the FIGMAG calculator. But again, this is only the correction on our book. It's not changing the state entitlement.
Yeah. So was the LCAP based on the correct state allocation, or was it based on some error on our books? That's what we need to know.
The way the LCAP FIGMAG LCFF calculator work is based on the input information that you put in, in the software. It's considered the gap funding, the COLAR that the state given out, and also the attendance for school district. So it combine every element that out there in order to pull in the final LCFF supplemental, concentrated.
All right. So let me, I'll let you go on, but yeah. I think, I think what you're saying is it's probably based on the correct state numbers
Yes.
and not our subsequent error.
Yes.
So let's just double check that.
Okay, all right. If you want, I could even send you the whole workbook. It's a big-
I personally would like to see the workbook, but that's me, and I'm on the finance committee, and so, yeah, please do.
Okay, all right, I will. And then, so now we are done with this page, looking at the LCFF. Then we will go into the federal income. So what make up the difference? The increase of the $13,000, special ed federal mental health is up by $3,000. Title I done by 9,000. Title II up by 8,000. Title III up only 428. Medical billing up by $10,000. So the state income-
Good work, Mrs. Dunn.
Is, consists of mental mandated costs, reimbursement, $46,000 increase lottery up by $4,000. After-school program is down by $12,000. Clean energy is decreased by $58,000. Special ed state mental health up 1,000. Common core is a decrease of 150,000. And other state income increase of 18,000. I want to point your attention to that decrease of 150,000 for common core is, again, basically we overbooked 150,000 during budget adoption based on the assumption that common core is a two-year funding, but eventually, common core is only a one-year funding, which is in 2013, but with two payment disbursements. So this is, again, a correction on Emory book only. It's not affecting any actual monies that we are going to get from the state. We already get all our entitlement on the common core program.
Yeah, that's another troubling error that you've addressed.
I can tell you this one, I made the wrong assumption personally, I did. I'm thinking that it's a two-year funding program when I do my budget adoption, but eventually, now I find it out it's only one-year funding.
Yeah, it was a one-time allotment that happened in 12-13, was it?
Yes.
Or 13-14, but it covered two years.
Yes.
And you get to report on it over two years.
Eventually, it was paid out in August and October 2013.
So 100, we only got 150 for the total two-year period?
I believe the total common core is 150,000. I just figured out-
It was about $140 a kid.
I just figured out we will get the 150,000 twice. So I did, yeah, yeah. And then now, on the local income. The local unrestricted is up $81,000, that's the garden donations. The local restricted is up by 129,000. Thus, including the local programs such as school climate, our kids, and also the beginning teacher support assistance program. Then we have special ed self-op transfer up $320.
Ms. Sue, on the last point about the common core, I think we also made reference to that in the LCAP. We used some of that common core money for some things, so can you-
We did, but that was based on the director curriculums and knowledge and our knowledge of the fact, we didn't, we weren't basing that on a double booking of that, that's correct.
Just double check that one too, but it sounds like-
Actually, the board resolution based it on the 150,000. And pretty well put it in three different parts, which is one, the instructional materials, two, the technology, and then three is the professional development. Because I had that discussion with Ms. Allen last year.
Yeah, and we just spent that once.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah. And then now, we're in the expenses. So after all these update, expenditures are lower by 289,000. And here are the expenditures. Again, you can see it's, on this slide, it shows you the amount that we budgeted back in the budget adoption, and also the revised budget under the first interim and their differences. Certificated salary is up by 78,000. Mostly, it's got to do with the five PD day, the professional development day being added on the salary schedule. And then classified salary is down by 236,000. Most of them is because of the elimination of the two classified management position. One is the CBO position, and the other one is the IT director position. And then employee benefits are down by 66,000. Books and supplies done 172,000. Again, most of them on the books and supply budget, it's got to do with the common core. When you fix the income side, you have to adjust the expenditure too. So when you take out the $152,000 income that you budgeted for common core, you have to adjust the expenditures.
So in the adopted budget at least, we did spend that extra 150, but we don't think we did in the LCAP?
Well, in the adopted budget, it was set there as if it was money coming in for the new year, so basically, Doris Sue has done in her update, she's deducted that out, and that's why it's reflected there.
Yeah, basically, it's offset to each other. You clear out the income, you clear out also the expenses.
Yeah. But so you had it as an expenditure.
Yes, yes.
Because we were assuming we were going to spend that 150.
Yes, because debit always has to equal to credit, so when you fix the income, you have to fix the other side too. And then contract and services is up by 108,000. Indirect cost is $417, and that is the, from the food services program. So encroachment, so these are program that require the general fund support. So special ed master plan, encroachment of 334,000. Special ed basic local assistance, $59,000 encroachment. Special ed state mental health, $38,000 encroachment. Ongoing maintenance, 147,000, for a total of 580,000.
Isn't there, I mean, traditionally, districts talk about encroachment, they also refer to food service? Do we have a cafeteria fund?
It's not encroachment, it's general contribution to the special ed fund.
Yeah. Remember, we kind of go over the transfer out.
Sorry. Yeah, no.
We kind of go over the transfer out earlier, the 181,000. That's the general fund transfer out to food services program. They're not in here as a contribution.
Okay. You're welcome.
So now the multi-year projection. So what shows here is only in a summarized format, and if you want to see the detail of the multi-year projection is included as, on the spreadsheet that is attached to the board package. So we pretty well go over the number for 14-15 already.
I'm sorry, the, I did have a question on the, 147,000 on maintenance, which you listed under encroachment, you don't need to slide back up to it.
Oh, okay.
That, that's for facilities maintenance?
That's the routine maintenance.
And that, we used to have- And that we used to have a state categorical deferred maintenance or other.
That is in a separate program, but the ongoing maintenance that's showing here is in the general fund unrestricted. And that's the routine maintenance.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. So I, I mean, I guess I hadn't thought of that as encroachment, but just as an expense that we have to, have to pay.
Yes.
But the, the deferred maintenance wasn't that eliminated with LCFF?
Yes, it is. But we do have a carryover balance from previous years. So it's still showing on the book. But I believe it's under Fund 14.
And, but, but that's not routine maintenance.
That's not routine maintenance. As far as I know, it's supposed to be for a bigger project. Like you're going to change the whole carpet for the whole school, stuff like that. It's a big project.
Got it. Okay. Thanks.
Okay. So we pretty well covered the numbers for 1415. Again, if for any details that you want to see, go into that multi-year projection that Lisa attached on the board package. It will give you more details. But right now I do want to make sure that you guys are understanding the assumptions that I used for the two subsequent year, which is 1516 and 1617. So on the multi-year, we, what we base the LCFF money is based on gap funding. Of right now for 1415 school year, the gap funding is 29%, close to 30%. To be exact, it's 29.56%.
And by gap funding, I think you mean the, the step that the state is taking toward full LCFF implementation?
Yeah, right on. Because for LCFF, it's not supposed to be fully implemented until maybe 1920 or 2021?
Twenty, 2021.
Okay.
At which point we will be at the 2007, eight level of school funding adjusted for cost of living increases. But basically we're working hard to get to where we were several years ago.
That's right. That's right.
And we were 40, 45th instead of 50th out of, per pupil funding in America. And so we, we, every year we take a certain percentage step to, toward that full amount.
But the direction is not always going up. So what I'm going to say on the gap funding for 1415 is close to 30% this year, but next year is back down to 20%.
Yeah.
So, and then it will go back up.
It's not a decrease. It's just saying it's a smaller step toward, toward the ultimate goal.
Well, actually.
We're going to only step 20% between where we are, you know, at the end of 1415 toward where we want, the target funding of 2021.
But the higher of the gap funding, that mean you will be getting more money from the state.
Sure.
So what I'm seeing is on the legal size spreadsheet that you guys, you guys are going to see, you're probably going to ask me, why is the LCFF money for 1516 is lower than the 1415 school year? That is the reason why. Part of it is because of the gap funding is really dropping from 30% to 20% in 1516. And the other reason is remember our attendance has been declining? And the way the ADA funding is based on the better of the current year or the prior year. So for, for 1415, we can still use 1314 ADA, which is seven and two, 702 as the ADA number for funding. But in 1516, we have to stuck with the 634. That, I believe those are the two critical reason why we are seeing a drop on the LCFF in 1516.
Even if ADA goes up in 1516, are we still stuck with?
No, actually the, we are projecting to be at 634 in 1516 and 1617, because that is the estimated projection at the first interim for 1415.
My question is, and if we beat those projections and do better and we get up to 700, do we get to go with that higher number? Are we stuck with the?
So actually.
Whatever we ended up with, you know, our current low number.
Actually, when we're going to do the second interim in March, we are going to do another update on the attendance later. If it's better than 634, we will use the higher number to base on our second interim. But as far as when we cut off on October 31st, the projection is going to be on the ADA is going to be only 634.
Yeah. Now that the gap you said for 1516 is.
25.48%.
For, for 1516?
No, 15, oh, sorry. For 1516, it's only 20%, 20.68%.
And what about 1617?
Uh, 25.48.
25, yeah. I mean, I, again, the, it shouldn't go down with those. I mean, if it were 0%, we should be, and we kept our enrollment constant. We should get the same exact LCFF allocation from the state. The fact that it's 20%. Again, if enrollment held constant means we should get more money from LCFF. So if there's a 20% gap closure, that's on top of wherever, you know, 1415 added. And we're getting less money, then that really means it's all ADA related. I don't, it's not that we're getting less, the state is giving us less money for LCFF. It's all turning on the ADA factor, I understand.
Well, part of the FICMA calculator, they will, again, they are just not going to base on the calculation on one element. It will take into so many criteria changes. And then the system or the software itself will come up with the best projections for the school district. So part of the criteria that the calculator is based on is really part of it besides the COLAR is the gap funding that will determine the, the funding or the entitlement for the different years. So, but I'm sure.
The gap percentage that you're quoting, that's a statewide percent that applies across the state. That is, because that's the state as a whole is taking a 20 or 25% step toward LCFF target. It's not unique to Emory.
I know. It's for the statewide. But then if you compare year to year, if the gap funding is changing, that mean your money is actually changing too. So when you're going down from 30% down to 20%, you will see a drop.
Well, that's the part I'm confused about Doris Sue, because I, I, the thing you and I probably need to go back and investigate is what John is saying is, John Affleck is saying, President Affleck is saying, that regardless the, the, the system, the state system, new system is set up, so it's supposed to be going up every year. So if we, if we had, let me ask you this question, make sure we're on the same page. If our enrollment stayed the same, which I think John was asking you, if it stayed the same, even if we saw a reduction in gap funding from 30 to 20, wouldn't our money still be going up an additional 20 instead of 30?
As I know, as I could do more research on this.
We might have this part incorrect, I think.
But as far as I know, it will affect the funding.
Oh, it will affect.
But then if you see a drop in the gap funding, you will see a drop in the LCFF money coming in.
But I think the gap funding was supposed to be on top of whatever it was the year prior. So regardless, whatever we had, even if it's 20 that next year, it means a 20% increase from the prior year, I believe, is, is what we think could be the case. I think is what you're saying.
I mean, I should have a graph for you, but we're on, it just, to go from 30 to 20 means the slope is less.
Okay. But we're still, still an increase. It's supposed to be a new 20% on top of where we are now.
2021 full target.
It's not a typical thing where.
And every year, you can't, it's, it doesn't, the math doesn't add up.
So the state might say, well, 5% is what you're going to get this year, but it's 5% new.
And it's 5% of whatever you've closed, because you're getting closer every year, right? It's like, if you kept going half and half, you're not going to be there in two years.
Right.
Half, okay, you closed half. And then you half of that, well, you're, you're not, you're only half of your closures. So you're actually only taking a quarter step.
Right.
So, yeah. But you're still going up.
We're still supposed to be going up.
The slope is steeper.
Thank you. So, so we can confirm that was a county, we can confirm that was a county also.
I will go back to do more research on this and then get back to you guys on the gap funding.
Right. But you're, you're running through a calculator and it's showing we're coming out less. And I think, I think it's a, I think ADA. That's the point, is I think we got to really focus on the enrollment numbers.
Okay. And then.
This is not a good direction to see our fund balance shrinking.
No, it's not. Yeah.
And then just for the work, the COLAR for 1415 is 0.85%. 1516, it's 2.19%. And 2.14% is for 1617. So is going up compared to 1415 school year. And then for classified salary, the, I just want to point it out, the salary increase, the 5% and also the one-time retro is not included in the first interim. The reason why is it was settled in November and the cutoff for the first interim is October 31st. So it was sold in the next second interim, not this one. And then the STIRS.
But it reflects the, the certificated salary increase?
No, we are talking about the CSEA, which is the classified salary.
Yeah. But we, we, we did a certificated increase.
Back in May or June, June, back in June. Yes, that's reflected. That's already.
And then the STIRS is going up and it's 8.88% for 1415 and 10.73% in 1516 and 12.58% in 1617. The PERS again is going up too, is 11.771% in 1415, 12.6% in 1516 and 15% in 1617. So these are the assumptions that may, when we do the multi-year.
That's an interesting point. I, I hadn't thought about this. I wonder how our gap funding is going to compare year to year with the STIRS, increasing STIRS contributions and how we're going to take that into effect. I, I know some, I, I guess that's a concern for us to keep looking at.
I will send you my blog from the budget deal in, in June that, yeah, I mean, the, the governor took out a lot of the increase that we're going to be seeing in LCFF and put it into STIRS. Absolutely needs to be addressed. But the lion's share of addressing the, the, the retirement benefits is falling on school districts. The state's not taking its share. You know, school districts are being asked to, to pay for most of it. So it is coming out of LCFF increase.
He gives and he takes away.
What's that?
He gives and takes away.
Exactly. Right, he did.
So anyway, as you can see on the multi-year, it really showing that Emory is in deficit spending for all three years. And several people have been approaching me and asked me, is the negative 609,000 that we covered earlier, is that the actual deficit spending for Emory? And the answer is no, because the reason why is the restricted carryover, they are included in the 1415 expenses. What we have to do in order to come up with the true deficit spending for Emory, we have to find out the total of the restricted carryover and take away that total from the negative 609,000. And then in this case, as you can see on this slide, the actual operating deficits for Emory is 434,000.
Yeah. Tell me what you mean by the restricted carryover.
Actually, I don't like that. I wanted to, like to show the whole slide, John, next time.
Okay. All right. Yeah, I was just asking for the technical, what you mean by carry over there. If you, do it however you want, if you need to go to another slide.
Let's put it the easy, the simple term. Let's look at a categorical program, program A. You have $1,000 carryover from last year. Okay? Now you know that in the current year, there will be $2,000 coming in. So how much altogether funds you're available for you for this year, which is 3,000, right? Right? Then what you do on your budget is you try, you, you try to use up all the funds available to you.
Cause we didn't, we didn't use $1,000 last year. So that's why we carried it over.
So you try to balance the program. So you set up your expenses to be $3,000 to use up all the funds available to you. But then when you're actually talking about deficit spending, technically is your income minus your expense. So what the system will do, they, the system will use the $2,000, the incoming money for the current year minus your expenses, which is $3,000. You will get a negative 1,000, right? And that's what the system will sell. When you use your total income minus your total expenses, it will sell as a negative 1,000. But is it the actual negative 1,000 is your deficit spending? The answer is no. The reason why you're putting in the $3,000, because you tried to use up the carryover money too. So that's why when you're looking at and, or when you're talking about deficit spending, you should take away the carryover from the restricted program to arrive to your true number.
As long as, thank you for that. That makes sense. As long as that $1,000, that extra $1,000 is a one-time thing that you added because you knew you had it. If it's a, an ongoing $1,000 expense, then it seems to me it is fairly part of a deficit spending.
Just like what you said, the $1,000 is the leftover money from the previous year. So it's a one-time thing. If you used it in the current year, it's got.
So just to clarify for everyone, the lottery carryover, clean energy carrier, uncommon core area carryover, you debited that as an expense, even though we really didn't expend it so we would have it for this year, which makes that number 609, 609,000 not to be the actual true deficit spending. And so our actual true deficit spending at this point, although we came into this year, I think, you know, somewhere between 700 and 900,000, it is actually now down to 434 based on some cuts and other things we've done. It's fair enough to say.
Yep. You're right on.
Okay.
Okay. Fund balance. So even though the multi-year is showing deficit spending for all three years, at the same time, it's also clearly showing that Emory is able to meet the 4% reserve requirement. So the staff recommends the adoption of a positive certification of the first interim report as presented. So before we go to the questions, I want to use this chance to thank you several people helping me and supporting me during the preparation of this presentation. One is Alex from the IT department. He helped me with a couple of slides. And then second, it's got to be Lisa and John from the superintendent's office for their editing and proofreading of this slide. And then the last but not least is Julia Dunn for just being there when I get stuck.
Even now. Thank you, Julia.
So now, ready for questions. But I hope I can answer all the questions that you guys have tonight. But if there are questions that I do need to do more research, like the gap funding, I will get back to you guys, you know, on another day. But I promise that I will get back to you.
Great. Thank you for your, your thorough presentation and, you know, your excellent first run. Before you leave though, I do. Uh, before you leave, though, I do have some questions for you. The, uh, the multi-year projections are based on what staffing assumptions? Are just our current staffing?
It is based on the current staffing that we are.
No new positions?
No new position, no cutting of position. What we have right now as of October thirty first, it will be carry on in fifteen sixteen and sixteen seventeen. But again, with the deficit spending, we need to be conservative. And I know John, he will be working on the deficit spending and also the declining enrollment situation.
Yeah, I mean, so that, that, I mean, obviously we have two choices, keep cutting or add revenues through- enrollment, it seems like a key one, and, um, you know, we're not, you know, of course, we should be exploring opportunities in, in federal grants, getting another gear up program and as well as private foundation grants. So I'd much prefer that we go the revenue side and roll up our sleeves than think about cutting.
Actually, I'm on your side, I love the comment that you just made, because there is only a certain level you can cut. When you cut to the bone, you can't cut it anymore. So, uh, and that's why it's so important that we work on the LCAP also, because on the LCAP, it will specify the goals that we are gonna have. And also part of it, we, again, the LCAP is emphasizing the, the student achievement outcome. And part of it is, we have to think of a way how to attract the kids coming here. And we can sow, if we can sow a higher achievement, uh, outcome, which is like a higher graduation rate, or even a better academic scores, that will be part of the criteria that the parent will be considering when they send the kids to our school district.
Yeah, yeah, attractive, thanks. Other than the enrollment, the ADA, are there any other big pieces on either side, the revenue or the expenditures that you think could fluctuate greatly? Obviously, the economy goes up, we could get more money from the state, but, you know, is there anything else that, I guess, surprises or things we should be thinking about?
Well, I think the LCFF, the concept itself is a lot of unknown. Right now, even though the state is saying, I'm gonna give you this, 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 you never know, because no, there is no law requirement, like we always do under, where you limit. There is a Prop ninety-eight to protect us, the minimum funding. But right now with the LCFF, there is no legislative out there that protect what we will get year by year.
Yeah, well, there's still Prop ninety-eight that, that the state has to spend the minimum, but you're right, under revenue limits, there was more of a statutory requirement that, and you kept track where there was a deficit.
Mm-hmm.
So you're right, you're right, we are, we are sort of at the whim of the economy.
And also, uh, state incomes such as the beginning teacher assistant program, we're not gonna see that anymore in fifteen sixteen. This is going to be the last year that we're gonna get the funding.
Because that categorical is going away?
Yes.
Yeah, how much was that this year, do you think?
Uh, it's a hundred and ten thousand.
Wow, yeah, that's a, it's a big one.
Yes, and also on the ROP, this is another state categorical program. Uh, the county has been gradually reducing the funding every year. So we're not gonna see the funding anymore to support that program. That means we have to make in general fund support money into the program in order to get it balanced.
Mm-hmm. The, just, my last question is on the reserves. Yeah, our ending fund balance, you had in there a line saying we have zero dollars in unappropriated reserves, right?
Mm-hmm.
Do you know, uh, and it is a very technical kind of thing, so it wouldn't surprise me if you didn't, because I don't know the answer either. Are there pieces of our reserves that don't really count as Prop two definition of reserves? Do you know what I'm saying? The Prop two, which as you pointed out in your slide, now says, and you're right, the triggers for Prop two to actually happen and tell districts to, force districts to spend their reserves down, uh, is several years off and may not-
At least four to five years.
Yeah, may not happen for a while. Um, but are, are there, you know, if we've got reserves for like, to pay our MOU to the city on the, you know, lease of, of the facility, are those protected from having to be paid down, or, um, you know, are we, are we gonna have to pay those down if that, those triggers trigger?
I, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna try to take your question for a second, Doris Sue doesn't mind. Those, um, if I understand your question correctly, are not protected. Um, and then, and then, if I'm understanding your, your question correct, you know, they're not.
Yeah, so it's not like, hey, we only, the only thing Prop two's talking about are those unappropriated reserves that we don't have obligations to sort of-
I believe it was a little bit wider than that. That's my, that's my belief.
But John, forty-four percent is a statutory requirement.
Yes.
We have to meet that.
Correct, yeah.
But to answer John's question regarding the undesigned amount being zero, the reason why on the multi-year, the designated amount is being zero, because the way that we're working right now, we are trying to use the ending fund balance to meet the obligations of some kind of a liability, which is such as the RDA loan or the MOU free facilities reserve. So that is the reason why we don't have any more general fund unrestricted ending balance that out there to use for maybe salary increase and so on, because we are trying to be conservative. Uh, we using the ending fund balance to put in some kind of contingency to meet the liability that we know as of today, such as the RDA or the MOU free. So I think this is a fiscally conservative and fiscally sound, because again, there is no guarantee the LCFF funding will be staying at the level that we are at right now. So it's better to be making a reserve in case that we do need to meet the debt obligations.
Yeah, and our, our basic problem, I guess a good analogy would be, if I have a great aunt who has a large sum of money in her retirement account, and I'm not working, and she gives me her Amex card, and she says, I only use this for food and basic necessities, and I rack up a bill of several thousand dollars a month, and my great aunt comes through, I wish I had a great aunt like this, but she comes through for me every month, and she keeps spending down her retirement. Eventually, her retirement money is gonna be gone. I kind of feel like that's our situation, if we don't make a change, if my analogy isn't offensive, I hope.
Yeah, we do make the cha, we do need to make that change, I agree with you, because on the multi-year, as you can see, the, the ending fund balance is really going down every single year.
Yeah, well, we're, we're okay for now, but-
We're okay for this year, yes.
You know, um, we won't, we, we keep going at this rate, we're not gonna be, be able to meet positive certification in one or two or three years.
That's right, even in sixteen seventeen, as you can see, we don't even have enough ending fund balance to meet the, uh, some of the liabilities obligations. So we do need to look into, again, the deficit spending and also the enrollment issue.
Okay, any other comments, question?
If, if you don't mind, I, I would echo what President Affeldt just mentioned in my little scribble notes here. The fact that fundraising has gotta be a focus, and that, for me, is in those same two areas, whether or not, um, I know this is, this isn't not new issue for Emory Unified in terms of ADA and our tracking and our ability to do that, but we absolutely have to make that a priority. We are incredibly vulnerable to our enrollment and our ADA, and we have always been that. And from my perspective, we have to continue to, you know, raise that awareness and make sure that everyone knows all hands on deck, because that is absolutely a sensitive area for our funding model, no matter if it's LCFF or what we have before. So I think that's one important, um, note that I would echo. And wanted to just emphasize from the fact that this is not a new issue, and it needs to be a very old, you know, historic issue would be great. Um, and definitely it just rings, um, you know, to the fact that we do need to actively seek opportunities to get support in some areas that make a lot of sense for us. Um, we, we have done it in the past, and it only speaks to, um, the fact that we have a, you know, a year coming where we are not able to meet our contractual obligations and/or be impacted by legislation. This speaks to advocacy through our partnership with Townsend, for instance, um, in terms of, you know, making it very clear how we'll be negatively impacted by what has been put into practice, and making sure we, along with CSBA or whomever other districts, are having a similar conversation, and just make sure Emory is not lost in that conversation. The fact that we are small has a huge impact on, you know, some decisions that are typically made for much larger school districts, and they don't always account for the size, our size. Um, and one other, uh, note, I do appreciate, you know, the, the conservative approach and, um, you know, the, the clear transparency in terms of the fixes. But I was, um, I am a little concerned about, I do, I have no problem, you know, moving forward with a positive certification this evening, but I just wanna feel really comfortable, that you feel comfortable about what you've been able to uncover through your, um, your revisit of the budget, and how, um, your assurance that, you know, we have what we have. So I, I just wanted to push that out to you.
So do you feel confident with these numbers, Doris Sue?
Uh, I feel very confident with the number that I'm sewing tonight. But again, as I said in the presentation, a budget, it will be changed throughout the year. But as of the cutoff October thirty first, these are very reasonable number. And my style is open communications. If you want anything, spreadsheet, workbook, I can send it to you. You look it over, if there is any discrepancy, let me know. Actually, for the multi-year, um, projection, that spreadsheet, I sent it to John, I sent it to Marion, and I sent it to Mark, because I want them to locate some mistakes that I made. Because I love to see the picture more beautiful than what it's sewing right now. So, yes, I'm confident with the number that I'm sewing tonight.
Thank you.
And just thank you, Doris Sue, because you're very thorough, and I do appreciate, I think we all appreciate that.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I just want to address, um, member Dice's comment on, you know, I, I agree with you that fundraising is, is one area that we need to look at, but I think we also need to make ourselves attractive to funders, and we do that by keeping our house in order. And we've got to be very, you know, we're a small district, and we're a lean district. And, you know, even going over the warrants this evening, I always, you know, take pause when we go through the list of checks we're writing to various educational entrepreneurs and, and agencies. And I, you know, it's fifteen thousand dollars here, it's fifteen thousand dollars there, and it all adds up, and all of a sudden, we have this deficit. I want to be very clear as we go forward, and, and really, if it's not actually in the classroom, you know, and something we have to pay, I think your analogy, you used food and rent, that's what we need to focus our funding on. I think, you know, we have a check going out now for visioning, and I've spoken out against this before, and I'll speak out against now. It's not, we don't have the money to do that, we don't have that luxury, you know. I think schools are closing tomorrow in the bigger districts that could absorb that loss of ADA. I think is the way it was framed, and we can't. So I want to be very careful, it's, it is, you know, it is watching our money as much as it is trying to increase revenue and making ourselves more efficient, so.
Okay, other thoughts or comments? Okay. Okay, the hour is late. Uh, this is an action item that, uh-
I'm with approval. One second.
Uh, do we have any public comments? Seeing none, um, any objections? Roll call, Ms. Tamer.
Member Ash?
Yes.
Member Marion?
Yes.
Member Pats?
Yes.
Vice President Dice?
Yes.
President Affeldt?
Yes. Okay.